I don't hear her, so we'll go ahead and begin the meeting. It's seven PM, April fourteenth, twenty twenty. This is the regular kinda meeting of the West County Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. And we will begin with a moment of silent prayer meditation briefly, and then that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will leave. So let's have that moment of silence, please. Alrighty, thank you, and now we will rise in our place and have a Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the flag, United States of America. And we're a republic, we're a nation, we're a nation, under God, individualism, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we've completed that, and now, Mr. Anderson, if we can have a roll call, please. Uh, Commissioner Hing? Commissioner Holtz?
Here.
Commissioner Hockes?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
And Chairman Reddolds? Yes, here. Alright, I will now toss it back to our director, and he can kinda fill us in a little bit on the machinations of tonight's meeting and how things are gonna work. So Jeff, if you would, please. Okay, and these are basically to try to help it be as clear as possible for the public to understand the business that we're attending to. So first of all, the chairman should control the meeting and call on each commissioner to comment, and understand that there is a delay. There's a few second delay, so there may be some, that's a little awkward sometimes, just be expecting that. Uh, commissioner should listen on the phone and watch YouTube or spectrum with the volume muted. So if you have a television on or the YouTube, turn the volume all the way down so you don't pick up any echo in the background, to make it clear for those listening. Please speak loudly and clearly into your phones for the best possible audio recording. And then during the meeting, all persons commenting should identify themselves. So this is Community Development Director Jeff Anderson. I'm speaking at this time. Uh, next, all votes should be roll call votes. And then lastly, if you can, place your phone on mute when you're not speaking. This will reduce background noise and feedback. So that's my instructions, try to help out with the ability for the public to understand what's what business that we're attaining to here. Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay, then we will move on to approval of minutes for our regular meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty. Any commissioners wish to make any changes? If so, let me know and who you are. Hearing none, those minutes will be approved as presented to us. Alright, the next item is all communications. Do we have anybody wishing to address the commission either via email or that we're calling to have them speak? We did not get any requests for all communications. Okay, then we will dispense with that. Having asked for it, we will move on to public hearings, which is item number two, which is a code amendment, number twenty dash zero two, a general exemption, citywide location. This is a request for a proposed code amendment consisting of certain amendments to the zoning section of the West County Municipal Code to modify commercial, non-residential uses and standards. Mr. Anderson, I believe this is your report, sir? Yes, I will be presenting this. I'm Community Development Director Jeff Anderson. This code amendment twenty oh two, we kinda titled this "Commercial Cleanup." The Planning Commission initiated this code amendment on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty, at the request of staff, and a study session was held by the Planning Commission on February twenty fifth, twenty twenty. So hopefully this sounds pretty familiar to you as we go through this. The proposed code amendment would basically do four things. It would modify the land uses allowed in various non-residential zones in the city, so hence the name "Commercial Cleanup." It would revise standards for screen walls in commercial areas, which are walls between parking areas in the street, and it would revise landscape standards in the M one zone, and it would revise separation standards for tattooing uses and residential zones. So I'm gonna start with the land use changes in the matrix. Um, we are going to, we are suggesting adding to the office professional zone several permitted uses, those being catering service, delicatessens, ice cream stores, tutoring facilities, and postal services. Also adding as a conditional use permit in the OP zone, veterinary hospitals and ice cream stores. In the neighborhood commercial zone, we'd be changing postal services from requiring an administrative use permit to a permitted use. In the neighborhood commercial and in the medium commercial zones, we'd be adding a conditional use of indoor recreation facilities. Other changes to the land use matrix are a chart that was in the code, but we're actually taking that chart and deleting it and then incorporating those things in the chart into the regular land use matrix. These include moving coffee shops, snack shops as a permitted use, pharmacies as a permitted use, and barber and beauty shops as a permitted use. In terms of screening, the current standard requires that a thirty-six inch high block wall be constructed on the outside of perimeter of parking areas that are adjacent to public streets. This has caused some confusion, and it can be a graffiti magnet and can also cause some maintenance issues because of how close they are to the parking spaces. So we're suggesting that be changed to require parking areas to be screened from public streets using means such as land contouring, low-profile walls, shrub plantings, or similar screens or combinations. So that gives a little bit more variety, flexibility to applicants in how they wanna provide that screening. For landscaping, first of all, the code for M one uses in that industrial part of town, the northwestern section of town, currently requires eight percent of the property to be landscaped, just like any other commercial zone. And we think, if we think about manufacturing zones, that might be a bit much, and I think you get a lot of landscaping in the back of these kinda lots that's not visible and maybe not maintained over time. So we're suggesting to require a minimum of four percent landscaping with at least seventy-five percent of that being within fifty feet of the public street. And then lastly, for tattooing, the code currently requires that tattooing uses be separated by three hundred feet from residential uses or zones. We're suggesting that that be changed to require a three hundred foot separation from residential uses, but not from zones. We did have a situation a couple of years ago where someone proposed a variance, we granted the variance because they weren't three hundred foot from a residential zone, but they were from uses. So that's why we're suggesting that. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of a code amendment to the City Council. And that conclude the staff report. This will be presented to the City Council in the near future, and they would take final action before this became part of the code. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those this time. Alright, any questions of staff at this time? I don't hear any. This just basically kind of codifies what we discussed at the study session, and that's just pretty much blessing it and sending it on its way. So...
Uh, there's Commissioner Hockes. I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, it's...
Go ahead.
Um, and I'm kinda catching up a little bit on this issue with regard to some other possible policies that are in place. Um, and so my question kinda is gonna lead to that, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. But in the review of this proposed ordinance, um, was this, did all departments, you know, have some opportunity to review this ordinance, this proposed change in the code and commending?
Well, how this came about is this was a staff-driven suggestion. That's why it was initiated, frankly, it was initiated, but it was at the request of staff. And we have been noting things that we've had requests for, things that seem to be not consistent with how the rest of the code works. So staff, planning staff, has been focused on this. We really didn't discuss this with other staff from other departments. This is more or less something that the planning department really has the authority and the responsibility to review and to provide information to applicants when they make...
Okay, I understand how it came about and how it was handled from that perspective. I definitely wanna address a little bit more about this, about the point of my question later.
Okay, there's more to your question? Commissioner Hockes?
A discussion amongst the commissioners.
Oh, any other discussion or questions from the other commissioners? I don't hear any. Why don't you continue on, Commissioner Hockes?
Okay, um, and the reason I asked Jeff that question was, um, like I said, I was catching up with some other policies and other things that are going on in sort of the general municipal world in LA County, um, and mostly through my own, um, my own professional endeavors with regard to, you know, the stormwater permitting programs that every city, uh, has had to undertake because of the promulgation of a permit that goes back to when it was, you know, last adopted by the Los Angeles Regional Water Polycontrol Board back in twenty twelve. Um, subsequent to that, the city, I understand now, is that it had implemented or adopted a ordinance, um, what is commonly called a low-impact development ordinance, um, back, excuse me, um, back in August, was twenty fifteen or fourteen. But, um, this ordinance puts into place certain requirements for new developments and redevelopment to comply with what are called standard urban stormwater mitigation plan requirements, or it's an ugly acronym that people sometimes abbreviate it to something. So these, um, so this particular, you know, change, proposed change in the code, you know, just sort of caught my attention with regards to the nexus to this existing ordinance that neither may not have been, you know, um, verbally applied in the review of development plans. Um, and, you know, but at some point, it might be, might be worth, you know, taking a look at that for various reasons. Um, and those reasons being primarily for the protection of the city, it's both financially and legally. And, um, you know, the, you know, to give you an example, I don't recall that in one of the recent approvals that we did for, um, it was for the development up there on San Bernardino Road.
Right.
It was a commercial, you know, manufacturing-type parcel where they're going to, you know, provide, you know, lease space for people to be starting businesses. You know, um, you know, that is a really interesting, you know, development, really exciting, because it has a lot of potential to do a lot of good, you know, for our local economy. Um, but I don't recall seeing or being aware of that, you know, because that's something that had run through that process when it comes to, you know, the so-called low-impact development ordinance and plan requirements to comply with that. Um, frankly, you know, given the state that the city's in, and, you know, I'm more than inclined to not even be terribly concerned about it, you know, I'd rather see, you know, good businesses get set up and get underway and can, you know, start doing business. Um, but at some point, you know, this, you know, the, you know, the regulatory powers are gonna flex their muscles, and eventually, you know, can't avoid, you know, dealing with it. And so this seems like this particular change in the code has an opportunity to do that, um, and do that with hopefully little to no harm to the ability to develop and redevelop, um, these kinda properties in the city. So, um, my thought was is that we have an opportunity to insert some language to reinvigorate the process by which, you know, development plans are reviewed and are conditioned in order to, you know, to meet this requirement that the city's gonna ultimately be on the hook for under this permit. So, um, I guess what I would like to suggest is probably a change or an addition of some language in the draft of the ordinance. So, um, I could offer that later, but I just want to see if there's some questions me and my fellow commissioners have with regard to this, this stormwater permit requirement, and why, you know, why we can take advantage of, you know, putting in some language to address that, with regard to the landscaping, um, element of it. And, you know, I think it's, you know, great that you can, you know, reduce that from forty to eight, to four percent, you know, minimum, um, but you also should be mindful of other, you know, regulatory obligations, uh, that we, you know, that we need to meet, and this is something that I'm personally aware of, and hopefully we can, you know, not, um, you know, fear ourselves in the foot about, you know, bringing, you know, um, Nexus policies together. So, um, that's why I wanted to bring this up.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Jeff. Chairman, maybe, uh, this is Jeff, the Community Development Director. So, yes, we do have those policies in place, um, and those are done by our engineering division. That's not generally presented to the Planning Commission. That's why you don't see them. These are done part of PlanTrick. We actually have a consultant whose job it is to look at those plans, the LID plans. So that is done, uh, it has been done for the last five, six, seven years, whatever timeframe. It is something the city is very seriously watching, and we're very aware that there are, can be penalties if you don't follow that. Um, it's, my understanding is that there's usually a variety of ways that you can achieve those runoff standards. Landscaping is one, and this suggested code amendment would not restrict them from having more landscaping if they so desired, but it would, it would just be the minimum. So, um, and if there's a concern on the part of the Planning Commission, that's something that could be removed altogether from here, um, and we could leave it alone. It's not something that, you know, obviously, all these things sort of stand alone in this code amendment. Um, but that's one I think we've noted, and if you drive up to the manufacturing area, you'll note that there's not that much landscaping up there in any of the lots. Some lots, I don't think they have any landscaping on them. So that's why staff is trying to think of what we could maximize the aesthetic with the landscaping without having people putting twenty-five-foot landscape areas on the back, which they're probably never maintaining. So, in some way, we do understand the NPDS requirements. Our engineering division looks at that all the time. When we get new plans, they go to our consultant, and we do put conditions on the projects like the one that Greg mentioned on San Bernardino Road and the one we're planning on bringing to a public hearing at our next meeting. But we'll have those conditions on there as well.
Okay, that's it. Uh, yeah, and I understand exactly why we would not normally see that. It just, there's no reason for us to see that. Um, but, uh, at the same time, in the language that's in the code, in this proposed, you know, code amendment here, um, the languages suggest that a minimum of four percent of the total net area of the development shall be landscaped and permanently watered. The water percent, I'm at your age, it's seventy percent of landscaping should be included in public streets. Um, I'd like to maybe throw something in there that, um, some lines that, you know, provided that, you know, that, um, you know, certain positions are met through, you know, and if you don't think it's necessary, Jeff, I, this is why I'm looking for your advice, is to draw some, you know, connection to that. By reducing the amount of, creating a minimum area, it may not provide enough of an opportunity for, uh, to, you know, meet those conditions. Uh, you know, they might need a place to keep their runoff and keep it on site. And four percent is actually quite a bit of area. It probably should be, probably should be able to achieve that. Uh, but, you know, it's, um, you know, it differs by, conditions can differ by, based on the gross area of the parcel. A very large parcel will have a very large area of, that amounts to four percent, and you can probably deal with the issue much better than a much smaller parcel did. So, um, anyhow, this kinda concerns me, because I, uh, I see things happening in that world where, um, it's eventually, you know, eventually gonna ramp up, and once we get out of, you know, this pandemic emergency, um, you know, the county is, the county is, uh, you know, sort of, um, as much as they're, you know, on the hook for their own, you know, regulatory, um, compliance requirements, um, they also have their funding program is kinda calling the shots on how it's gonna be complied with. And, um, so the more that the city does for itself, um, the less, you know, parties like the county or the regulatory board are gonna be down our nets. So I guess my suggestion is can you include some language in here about this four percent use, sort of provisional, is provided that, you know, you know, NPDS requirements for controlling runoff on the parcel of the net?
Yes, I, this is Director Anderson, and I think that would be fine. I think that's not, that works fine, Commissioner Hockes. We could say that, provided that, provided the property is in compliance with stormwater requirements. I think I'll work a little bit on that stormwater requirement language to make sure we have, I'll talk to the engineers to make sure we have the right title there. But we can easily add that if everybody is comfortable with that. Okay, this is Chairman Reddolds. Any other thoughts from other commissioners? Anyone have any issues with Commissioner Hockes was suggesting, or are we good to go on that, do you think? Anybody wanna chime in on that?
This is Commissioner Kennedy. I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Hockes, and I think we should do it.
Okay, this is Chair Reddolds. Any objections from Commissioner Holtz? Are you good?
You need to take a roll call.
Well, okay, so this would be, this would be in a... Yes, go ahead. I think, I think the best thing to do right now, although it's a little, it does seem a little awkward, is to open the public hearing, and then ask if we received any comments, and then I'll respond, and then, you know, we'll give the comments, and you can close the public hearing, and then you can go to discussion and, 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 uh, motion. Yeah, okay. Alright, I'll open the public hearing, public testimony portion. Do we have any speakers on this item, Mr. Director? No, we did not receive any requests to provide input. Okay. I guess it would be appropriate to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and go to commission discussion on the item. Commissioner Hockes, do you wanna go first on this, on the discussion? Talk about what you were just referring to and what you'd like to see happen?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to just sort of emphasize that there's forces at work out there that in this, in this world of this stormwater permit, uh, that could, you know, bring a lot to bear on the city and actually do harm to the city. Um, I'll give you just one sort of bizarre example of something that, um, a story I've been following for quite some time, and I, and I, and I hope staff that's in some way can, you know, become aware of it and keep an eye on it and be, and, uh, and understand the implications of it, is that, um, the county has a project, a stormwater management project that they've been proposing to construct a facility that captures stormwater, um, maybe a subsurface facility. Uh, this is outside the city area in, you know, in, it's in the, the unincorporated area outside the city, underneath Cassid High School's football field, and other open spaces, you know, on that property. And, um, and it's a project that would have connection to, potential connection to, uh, the various permitted, uh, cities, um, being able to potentially use that project as a compliance, uh, you know, to, or to register compliance with the permit program. However, this project, in my opinion, is a horrible, horrible project. It's, um, it's incredibly expensive. They wanna build this project for a price of about sixty million dollars. And because their contention is, is that other cities, again, from the project from this regulatory standpoint, county is, you know, gonna be eventually looking to cities that contribute runoff in that direction to contribute to the project. Um, now, the, in this stormwater permit program, um, the county set up its own funding program that was voted in, um, a while ago, you know, under Measure W, and under that program, the city's gonna presume that these estimates are at one point three seven million dollars, and it's municipal allocation out of that, um, which is really intended for the city's use for itself, uh, on its own, you know, smaller projects within the city. Um, but I just don't see how that in any way could be contributed to the county's grand plan for this sixty million dollar project outside the city's boundaries in a location that was still conceived, politically motivated, and, uh, and potentially ripe with, um, corrupt dealings between some parties, um, outside of the county and in conjunction with that unified school district. I mean, an entity was actually being audited by the state auditor now because of this kind of... So, um, so this is the sort of thing that can happen. You know, I know it's a long stretch from our planning permission, um, permission, uh, what we, what we're doing here, uh, but in emphasizing what's gonna happen in this code amendment, I really think that it's, you know, one of these, another way that we can keep an eye on things where we control our own fate, we manage our own, um, uh, business when it comes to complying with these, uh, you know, state and federal regulations, uh, and not be hoodwinked by, by the county, uh, to, you know, be tricked into participating, you know, in a, you know, in a, um, a project that is, you know, ripe with problems and, uh, and is overpriced, you know, compared to the benefits it's supposed to offer. So, um, but this is, that's just where this all this thinking kind of comes from, is, uh, you know, we're, you know, we're here to, you know, protect the interests of the city, and I see this as just a really small way, um, but that's my motivation behind it, is about protecting the interests of the city.
Okay, this is Chairman Reddolds. Any other commissioner comments on this? If not, let me ask Director Anderson, is this something that is, uh, I mean, is this something that engineering would, would look at as part of their review of a project, or is this something that we, we should consider adding into the language? No, this is, this is something, this is Director Anderson. Yeah, that is something that engineering will be looking at and is looking at. It's very timely that Commissioner Hockes is mentioning that, because it's something we're looking at right now. Obviously, before the city can spend any of... Obviously, before the city can spend any of its money, it has to go to council and has to be approved by council. So, that's not something that's done behind closed doors or a planning commission, but it is something that will, you know, that the city is discussing and looking into and will be, will need a council at some point.
Okay, this is, this is Chairman Redholtz. Is this something that we need to add, or is it just something that, that happened as part of the process? That's my question.
Well, no, it wouldn't be anything that would need to be added to this code amendment. I think Commissioner Hockes is explaining why he thinks it's important to keep that in people's forefront, to think about the stormwater runoff issues.
Gotcha, okay. So, we can, if we choose, we can go ahead and approve this as it's presented to us tonight, correct?
Yes, you can, but I, keep in mind that Commissioner Hockes did suggest that language, which I read, and if you want to add that, then that would be an amendment to, you know, to what's presented to you.
Okay, and, uh, is that the pleasure of the commission to add that at this point? I have no problem with it, if anybody, this is Redholtz, if anybody wants to. All good, you know what, uh, okay. Commissioner Hockes, did you want to make a motion on this with your language addition? Commissioner Hockes?
Sorry, I put myself on mute.
I'm saying, did you want to go ahead and move this item with your additional language?
Yes, I do, and I can offer some specific language, very, very simple phrase to add at the end of the, um, of the language that's in the proposed code amendment. I would, I would propose that, to add the language at the end of, you know, the, um, the language that's bold and underlines regarding the minimum four percent of total net area of landscaping, that at the very end, put the, add, provided, uh, the conditions assigned by the city can be met in accordance with ordinance, I looked at the ordinance, it's ordinance number twenty-two sixty-two, or some, or some other wording to replace ordinance number twenty-two sixty-two, if there's some other description for that. So, provided, the conditions assigned by the city can be met in accordance with ordinance number twenty-two sixty-two.
Okay. Staff, okay with that?
Yeah, we can work with, this is Director Anderson, yes, we can work with that.
Okay, this is Chair Redholtz. Is there, that was a motion by Commissioner Hockes. Is there a second to that motion with the amended item?
Commissioner Kennedy, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hockes, a second by Commissioner Kennedy, and maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
This is Director Anderson, before I do that, I'm going to give you the resolution number, which is twenty.
Resolution, yeah, thank you.
Twenty dash six oh three one. And then I will call, and I, I think, well, first I'll start off by asking if we do have Commissioner Hing with us at this point? Okay, if not, then I'll start with Commissioner Holtz?
Yes, I, I'm having a little concern here because I'm not, I don't have the knowledge at the Commissioner Hockes, so I, you know, I hate to say yes when I have very limited knowledge of what that will do. Um, so I'm thinking I'm going to abstain on it, at this issue, because I don't, I don't have the understanding or the knowledge of what that would do or what would have caused.
Okay, so abstention from Commissioner Holtz, Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz? Okay, this is, I'm just going to make a, I'm going to vote aye on it for the record, but, you know, I, Commissioner Hockes is an engineer and, you know, I kind of have to, uh, yield a little bit to his expertise on this and also with staff's concurrence. So, keeping that all in mind, I'll vote aye. So, we have, uh, three aye votes and an abstention, so it does pass, three, two, zero with one abstention. Okay? So, I believe that takes care of that item and our only public hearing. So, this is Chairman Redholtz, and we're going to move on to our non-hearing items. Item number three, which is a study session regarding our design review subcommittee guidelines. Director Anderson will be presenting the staff report.
I will be doing that as well. And this is something that the, we have been working with the commission on for some time now, probably three months or so, to update the subcommittee fully reviewed, the subcommittee for design review guidelines. It started when we had a, a project, there was a concern about the way the front elevation was designed. We went through and had a study session on the guidelines and we decided to add two, one to the one-story guidelines and one to the two-story guidelines. And tonight, we just, we presented you in the, in the materials, the new forms that we'll be handing out, the new guidelines for one-story and two-story, where it's added for the one-story guidelines, that the front elevation of houses should be designed to engage the street to the placement of a door, windows, and the front porch, as well as other architectural features that define the elevation at the front of the house. So, that will be added to the one-story. And then the two-story, we would add a guideline that says incorporate the one-story guidelines in the architectural design for two-story houses in additions. So, with that, that's, this is more informational, we don't necessarily need a vote unless there's any concerns with what we've done there. We're going to incorporate those and start handing those guidelines out to the public as early as tomorrow.
Okay, this is Chairman Redholtz. Any commissioners have any issues or anything to discuss on this item, or we can just move it along? Hearing none, I guess those guidelines will be adopted. Is that the correct language?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we're good on that. All right, this is Chairman Redholtz. And now we are moving on to item number four, another non-hearing item, which is a general plan annual report for 2019. Director Anderson, you want to tell us about this item?
Yes, as the report states annually, we provide information to the state on our general plan process or the implementation of it over the past twelve months and also on the housing element. Housing element is required in the apartment in the state that reviews that, provides some documentation that we have to fill out and return to them, so it's very, you know, it's very, it's consistent throughout all cities in California. We provided you that information. It kind of talks about how many housing units have been built over the, or how many housing units have been approved through the process and then how many have been built and finalized over the past year. And then we have the general plan information that provides you information on the development chart, which when the general plan was adopted, it included several different areas, districts in the city where development was, was thought to be the place where it would occur. So, and we did an environmental impact report based on that, so we provide that breakdown and we add the numbers to that every year. And so, that's provided to you in attachment one. And then we also have a list of all the policies and actions that are in the general plan and then kind of make a statement about where they're at in process, whether they've started, whether they're an ongoing thing or whether they've been completed. This is presented to the planning commission for, because it's a general plan of the city, it's the, it's the adopted policies and goals of the city, it's the idea of where, the concept of where the city sees itself going over the next fifteen years or so at this point. And so, it's important for the planning commission, we also provided this with the council, to understand those things and understand what the general plan says and where it's trying to take the city. So, that's why it's before you. Again, it's not really something we need you to vote on, it's just informational, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to respond to those.
Okay, thank you, Director Anderson. This is Chairman Redholtz. Any commissioners have any questions on this report?
Yes, this is Commissioner Hockes. I have a question. Jeff, the, I guess of all the elements in the general plan, the one hot potato element is the housing element. And being that it has, I would presume some sort of heat behind it in terms of the state, you know, law requirements to meet, um, how, to meet, uh, certain housing, um, requirements for at different income levels. And so, from the, in the report, there is a report on implementation of this element with regard to that. The, it shows that, going back to 2014 and in the five-year period of reporting on it, that we had a, the regional, regional housing needs assessment allocation, number of eight hundred and thirty-one units that need to be met and, um, and that that's broken down across above moderate, moderate income, low income, and very low income. And, um, and for the, of those four categories, income level categories of, for housing types, the only one that seems to have been met is on the above, above moderate category and the other three, no housing in the five-year period has been developed to meet those numbers. So, what in your estimation is the story as to why that's the case? I would think that for a community, for a city like West Marina, that the lower you go down on the income level for the housing price, the more difficult it is to meet because it's just harder for developers to be able to like that together and, you know, what, and then what are the consequences of not meeting, um, our HNA allocation numbers?
This is, this is Director Anderson. So, the housing element is an eight-year cycle. We're in the 2014 to 2021 cycle, so we're nearing the end of that. As Commissioner Hockes pointed out, we received a regional housing needs assessment of eight hundred and thirty-one units back in 2013, 2014. And so, one of the things that you have to do, we had to do at that time, is we had to show that we had zoning capacity for eight hundred and thirty-one units and the zoning capacity to allow for affordable housing to be built. To me, that's the main thing to understand, because we're also coming up on a timeframe where we're going to be doing another housing element in the next year or so. And we will need whatever the numbers they give us for the regional housing needs assessment for twenty-one to twenty-eight, that will be issued sometime in the fall and we will need to show zoning capacity for whatever numbers they give us. So, that becomes the real job of the city, the challenge of the city, to show how we're going to do that. I'm not aware of there being any punishment for not meeting affordability. Also, I think in the same breath, we can say we haven't built any affordable, we also have not denied any affordable units. No one has proposed any affordable units since 2014. One of the main reasons for that is because the state did away with the redevelopment agencies in 2012, I think it was, and the redevelopment agencies got a significant amount of money that was given to them from the state to make sure that affordable housing units were constructed. And so, before that time, before 2014, we did have some constructed over the ten years before that because we had funds coming in to do that. Now, we have no, very little funds coming in to do that, so we haven't been able to put together a project and we haven't had anybody propose a project. So, the long and the short of it, in my estimation, is that when we, when we look at the housing element, the big challenge is going to be trying to figure out how to meet, how our zoning capacity will allow for whatever number of RNE units that are assigned to us.
So, we don't really, I guess, I just wanted to make sure, is there anything that we need to be concerned about when it comes to, you know, these RNE allocation numbers and what's going to happen in the next one coming out? Uh, what, I mean, in terms of them being sort of soft numbers or hard numbers and potential consequences? It seems like the state, you know, when it comes to housing policy, keeps, you know, bringing a heavier hand, you know, more and more. And so, just wondering if this is something that's, you know, not, you know, going to create any undue burdens on the city?
This is Director Anderson. That'll depend on who's, who's listening to those burden, whether they think they're undue or not. But I, um, I think that we should all be prepared for a fairly challenging number that's assigned to it, because from what I understand from the state, they are ramping up the idea that we need more housing and so they're, they're going to, they're going to broadcast that across the state. They're not going to just assign one city to have all the units. They're going to try to equitably distribute those units across the horizon. So, we should be prepared for that and, you know, staff has already kind of been thinking about ways that we might be able to, to address those things, but we won't know for sure until we have a number assigned to us.
This is Chairman Redholtz, too. In light of the legislation that was passed late last year, you know, I mean, regarding, you know, our zoning, our R1 zoning, too, I mean, you can see that the state has it in their agenda to, you know, really ramp up, you know, high-density housing. So, you know, I think that's something we're going to be dealing with for, you know, at least into this next year and beyond. And, you know, I have, I've expressed my concerns and I continue to have concerns about the direction that's going in. Any other discussion on this? I don't hear any, so this is a receiving file item without the action needed, so it's just receiving file. Okay? I guess we're done with that item. All right, we have reached the, uh, point on the agenda for commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous. Any commission comments? Identify yourself and state your comment if you have any. I don't hear any. Okay, at least Don's awake, that's good to know. Let's go to, uh, item number five, which is the committee's development director's report. Mr. Anderson, please.
All right, so we have forthcoming on there. We do have some public hearings scheduled for the April twenty-eighth meeting and you should expect that meeting to be similar to what we're setting up, what we give tonight, basically a kind of a conference call meeting. These are both important things that we're trying to achieve. One is an applicant-driven proposal for an assisted living facility, which the applicant is very interested in moving forward. So, although it's not an ideal time to have a public hearing, we recognize that we want the business to keep moving forward. So, that's why we're going about it in the way we are. Right now, we don't have any items for the May twelfth agenda, but that may change in the next couple of weeks, but we will see, we'll be able to report to you on that on April twenty-eighth. And secondarily, on that director's report, we also have our, our project status report, which lists all the projects that the planning commission has approved over the past few years and where they're at in their construction phase. And that concludes the planning director's report.
All right, and any city council action regarding planning?
No, I have nothing to report. There was nothing on the last city council meeting that we came to plan.
All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Uh, thank you, everybody. Stay home, stay safe, stay, stay well, and without objection, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and thank you all and good night.